One.
Okay, I'm going to call the order of meeting of the Board of Selectmen for April 27th, 2020. I'd like to start by asking the Madam Clerk to read the Governor's Order regarding open meeting law.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Persuading to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Master 308018, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their television by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Great.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will go to public comment. I haven't seen any email come in. I'll ask Laurie if we've had any emails that we may have missed that have come in regarding public comment. Okay, I am going to assume there was no public comment emails. All right, so our next order of business is to move to a public hearing. We will have a public hearing to receive comments on proposed amendments to the personnel policy of non-union personnel. So. Okay, we're having a technological problem with Ms. Berzloff on muting herself. So if you could just through the chat, if you could tell me if there was any public comment and if we should hold on that item until we get the muting problem figured out. Okay, well, we'll do this, given that we're having some minor technological problems. Okay, we had no public comment. Thank you, Laurie. All right, so I would like to hear a motion to open a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed amendments to the personnel policy for non-union personnel.
A move to open a public hearing pursuant to the town of North Andover bylaws section 37-3 to receive comments regarding revisions to the personnel policy. Roll call vote is required.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Phil DeColigero, second.
Okay, we'll go through in, I guess, alphabetical order. So Phil, why don't you start by last name?
Um, Phil DeColigero, aye.
Who have problems with the alphabetical order? Regina? Oh, Regina cannot unmute herself.
Oh, wait, wait, it worked now. Sorry.
Okay, good.
I just was telling Laurie what to do and then it wasn't working for me right after I said to do it. Anyway, aye.
Okay. Chris Nobley?
Chris Nobley, Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary?
Rosemary Medley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, we are in a public hearing. So Madam Town Manager, would you like to explain to us the revisions to the personnel policy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to. There's not, there's not many. So there is some additional classes that have been added to the equal employment opportunity section. So they are now different groupings that were not always included and under federal law now typically are, are discriminated against class, and those have now been added to our policy. We have created a new policy which is about nepotism, dating and fraternization amongst employees. So in the past, we did not have, we did not have a policy about that, and now we will. We have a new policy about non-disclosure agreements. If you remember, this was a topic a few months ago where we talked about non-disclosure agreements and how the town was not going to require employees to enter into them, nor would we pay for non-disclosure language within agreements, and we're memorializing that in the agreement. It defines additional hours for exempt employees. So as you know, exempt employees are not paid overtime and typically not given any compensatory time at all. This would allow us, in some circumstances, to give an employee some extra time if they worked extra. So for instance, would be someone who during the COVID-19 crisis is, is working a lot of weekends, et cetera, who is an exempt employee. We would be able to give them time off during the week to compensate for that time. We are required to have both a female and male harassment complaint officer. We are making Andrew Shapiro the harassment complaints officer. We've made some changes to the employee benefit program. So vacation leave for new hires is going to go from two weeks to three weeks. Employees that were hired at the two-week period will be adjusted to a three-week period. We are having trouble with, with getting new employees because typically they're coming from places where they had more vacation than we're offering. And so an employee is seldom going to come to work somewhere where we're telling them that at least most we can give them is two weeks vacation, and they're receiving three in another community. So that's, that's going to be helpful. We are going to allow sick leave to be used for routine medical appointments and also for people to use up to eight of their sick days to care for family members. So currently, if you have a sick parent, child, or spouse, you have to take vacation time. This would allow you to use your sick time if you have a sick person at home. We are increasing the bereavement leave to three days for non-immediate family members from two days. And if your family member services are not held immediately after death, which is currently happening quite a lot, you can use that time when the services actually occur. We have not made any changes to the classification page because we are in the middle of doing that classification and compensation study that we've been talking about. Those are all of the changes, and I don't know if Laurie can answer or not, but I do not believe we received any comments. So this was sent to all employees to see if there was any comments on it. We did receive two technical changes, one from the town clerk and one from the DPW director, which were made. They really just moralizing things that already happened. I don't believe we've heard from anyone else. I did talk with the police union directly, and they did not have any comments. The way this works is that it applies to non-union employees. But if there's something in this that is not contemplated within your collective bargaining agreement, this document would rule. So for instance, social media policy typically not in a collective bargaining agreement, but because it's in the personnel handbook, union employees still have to adhere to it. The nepotism policy is not in any other collective bargaining agreement, and so it would apply to all employees. And I don't know if Dee has anything she wants to add. She worked very hard on this document.
Thank you very much. No, I don't really have anything to add, and I also did not receive any additional comments.
I didn't receive any comments either.
Okay, well, let me open it up to the board then. Anybody on the board have any comments regarding the changes to the personnel policy for non-union employees?
Mr. Chair, this would be sort of a more of a comment. I guess it could be construed as a question. So with all due respect to Andrew, do we have an employee that females would might prefer to go to? Do we have a male and a female? I know we've done that in the past.
Yes, we have one male and one female. By law, we have to have one of each gender.
Okay, very good. And could you tell us who that is?
Do you remember off the top of your head? If not, I can go and look.
It's Kathy Darby, the HR Director.
Perfect.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you.
My comment would just be that I appreciate the town manager working as closely as she did, especially with our finance committee chair, in identifying and incorporating some of the concerns that were raised several months ago with regards to non-disclosure agreements and the use of taxpayer funds, which I think the town manager has been very transparent about making sure all of the details were out and available to the public. And so I'm glad that we're enshrining in the personnel policy protections for taxpayers and for employees. So thank you for, for working after hours. In fact, I think a few of the meetings happened much after hours to be able to accommodate our own working schedule. So thank you, Melissa. And to Sasha Weinreich, who I don't know if she's on this call, but was instrumental in making sure this became a reality.
All right, great. Any other comments? And I do appreciate all the work you guys put into this. I think these are very good changes. I think it brings us up to a level where, as the comment just said, we can compete with other towns. You know, things like vacation time and personal time is very important to people, especially folks who have a few years of experience behind them. It's tough to go from one job and lose vacation time to taking another job, and that would be certainly something that would, I think, dissuade a lot of people from, from taking jobs. So I think it's a good, a good change to make and appreciate all the work you guys put in and all the thought you put into getting that done. Any other comments? Okay, I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Rosemary Medley, motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Regina Keane, second.
Okay, Regina Keane, second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll go through a roll call vote. DeColigero, how do you vote?
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Medley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We will take this up under new business for a vote on this in a, in a little bit. So let's start. We're going to move to governmental reports. So tonight, I believe we have Dr. McMillan, Brian LaGrasse, Andrew Shapiro, Laurie Berzloff, and Dee Casey all have updates for us regarding the COVID-19. So we can start in whichever order you folks want to start in, how I just read it or however you want to start. But I'm open to anything.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a few things too, but if you don't mind, I'll go last so I can just fill in. Maybe we could start with Brian and Frank. That way Brian can give us an idea of what the numbers look like today.
Okay. So basically, what we're doing, what we're looking at now is Massachusetts in general has 56,000 cases. Two weeks ago, we were at 26,000. So in the last two weeks, we pretty much doubled the state numbers, and that's mainly due to increased testing and lab capacity, which is kind of what we wanted and what we expected with everything coming online, more testing kits, more lab capacity, things like that. So what we're seeing is good. We want to get this out there so we can see who's positive and do the contact tracing to get asymptomatic patients in isolation and their contacts in quarantine. So what, one thing that we are seeing though, which is really good, is a leveling off across the state of the daily positives. We're seeing approximately 1,500 people per day becoming positive, which has leveled off and come down a little bit in the last four or five days, which is great. What that means basically is the social distancing that we're doing and everything we're doing with that is working and is working really well. Our cases locally, we're at 157, which is only one new one as of today from yesterday, which is really good. Eighty-seven have recovered, and unfortunately, we've had seven deaths in town. The deaths were all, were all only people with, sorry, with underlying conditions. The hospitalization rate in the state is at 7%, which is kind of around what they expected. In Massachusetts, there's still 14% of the ICU beds are still open and available, which is a great thing. That basically means that the hospitals haven't exceeded their capacity yet, and there's still room for any increases, any waves that come up. If they start to reopen things soon, there is capacity to handle that. Our long-term care facilities are actually doing really well. We've had 28 total cases in them so far. Twenty-four are still currently active. Last week, we did have a conference call with some of the long-term care facilities in town, just to get their status updates, find out how they were doing on PVE, their procedures, and get kind of all on the same page. Three out of the four have requested National Guard testing. One was done today and two are being done tomorrow. So they come and they do every resident and every staff member to get a baseline, see who is positive, who's asymptomatic, and kind of go from there to kind of isolate them, quarantine anybody that's, you know, close contact, and try to get ahead of it before anything serious happens and spreads throughout the entire facility. So right now, we're looking to identify the asymptomatic people and stop the spread. That's one of the things that we're seeing now is obviously two days before you show symptoms, you can actually spread it, which is the problem and why the numbers are still increasing just in general. So testing and contact tracing is a vital part, and that's what we're kind of moving on to now. That's going to be essential in basically fighting this pandemic and going on to the next step of leveling off and hopefully decreasing soon. General update from the Board. Board of Health last week passed a general order for food retail employees to wear masks while at work, which I think is a good thing. It protects the workers from each other and from the residents, and it protects the residents from the workers. One thing that we started to see was positive workers in grocery stores and food retail. And then what happens is if you have a positive worker, people on their shift get quarantined for 14 days. So you're reducing your work staff by an exponential amount, which is something we didn't want to see. So that's all that I have. I think Frank might want to chime in a little bit too as well?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. I think it more or less hit the, the main points, which is testing, contact tracing, and isolation, and mitigation for the, for the, the fact that we have asymptomatic spread in the community right now. We felt that there would be a good opportunity because the workers in the retail stores, the retail food stores, are basically seeing everybody in town, you know, everybody in town has to eat. And so we felt that if they were wearing droplet masks, it would reduce the transmission of, between them and members of the community, which they get a lot of contacts per day, whereas somebody like Brian or I may only contact maybe a half a dozen of people a day. The person who's at the cashier at Market Basket is probably contacting quite a bit more. So we also didn't want to keep it terribly intrusive, so we made a strong recommendation for the public that's visiting these, understanding that not everybody has access to masks, but if you do have access to a cloth face covering, that you should please wear it to also avoid exposing the people in the stores. By doing so, the feeling was is that we could allow some return to normalcy to the best degree possible, but also preserve the safety. And so the, in addition to the order for the, for the workers to wear their masks, we made a strong recommendation for anybody entering the businesses to also, also be masked, understanding that there's really no, really no way to enforce it. I'll go back on to mute unless there are questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Frank, for those updates.
So Dick, I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute myself. I apologize.
Okay.
Are we trying to coordinate with area communities so that there's consistent message coming out of town hall? So that it's, obviously, each Board of Health is kind of left up to their, each town, I should say, is left to their own devices, right, to be able to put together policies? How closely are we working with other Boards of Health to ensure that, you know, people in the region overall are getting the same message? And it's not like, oh, I heard you have to do one thing in Andover, but another thing in North Andover, and then another thing in Boxford?
I can answer that if you want. Actually, I'm working very closely with my colleagues. I do one weekly conference call Zoom meeting with the local public health directors in this area. I do another one that's a little bit more of a sub-region that's all across the Northeast with health directors from Amesbury and Salisbury down to, you know, PBD. And then we do a statewide conference call once a week as well. So we're bouncing ideas off each other every day. We're trying to get the same messages out and trying to be cohesive as a public health group. Each board is different and does have different ideas as an actual board, but the health directors are all kind of bouncing stuff off of each other. So we have the same message to try to get out there into our boards to make the best decisions as possible.
Now, do we know are the same, so like, what's prompting this question is I went to Market Basket last weekend, and I will say that, you know, repeatedly over the intercom, the manager was reminding folks that, you know, per the order of the Board of Health, we're asking people to respect the six-foot distance and to go a certain way around the supermarket so that way we minimize violating social distancing. And so I appreciate that. I mean, as a, as a company here in North Andover, they were clearly trying to follow the rules. Like, is that something, for instance, that other communities have also put in place for Market Baskets or like companies like that being told?
Yes, they are. We've been working very closely with them. They've had a hard time with the mask order. We actually had to give them masks to get them started. They would just, they didn't have the supplies right off the bat. But Market Basket in general has been working on it. Other towns have done it. The one-way aisles, the mask mandates for employees, that's all being done across the region, which is good. Some boards rolled out quicker than others, but we're all trying to get to the same spot. So that is being talked about on a regular basis with everybody in the region.
Now, we as a Board of Selectmen, I mean, we're not, we're not meeting every day. You're, you're living this every single day, Brian. And Dr. McMillan, whether it's as a member of the Board of Health or just professionally, you likely are as well. What are ways that we as a Board of Selectmen can be helpful, or is it just right now, we're all doing what we're supposed to be doing?
I think, I mean, definitely getting out the messages that we're getting out there. I'm trying, I'm trying to get PSAs out on a regular basis, just the latest information and procedures and things people can do to protect themselves, as well as employees, things like that. I think that just getting the information out is the best way to do it. I know it's information overload, but if it comes from a reputable source, not social media all the time or Facebook, but from you guys and from the board, I think that's the best way to do it.
Okay.
Brian, Rosemary Medley, you were breaking up a little bit when we were talking about the testing. My question is this, when will we have the results of people who are testing positive, who are asymptomatic? It's kind of a curiosity question, but also I think an important question that the public understands that you could be with people who are not showing any symptoms at all, who could be, so do we have, I know it's sort of new with the tracking and all of that as well. Do we have a, a date when we might be getting results from such testing?
The testing has been on a scale, basically. The beginning, the early tests were a few days when there was only a few labs that were approved to do the actual testing. It could take up to seven days, which was a problem. So getting the lab capacity up and increase to what they've done now, some of the blood tests can come back, or some of the nasal swabs come back in 24 hours. They're also rolling out rapid tests, which gives you an answer within 15 minutes. So I know AFC is doing one on Wednesday here in town, rapid testing site, I think. All across the region, starting to get to the rapid testing, which is much better than the 24, 48, 72-hour tests. So it's been scaling to a better test over time.
Brian, I'm going to chime in on this for a moment because I think what Rosemary's getting at is, is there's, there's a subtle difference in the question. There's, there's the rapid testing, which tells us, do you have the virus now? And then there's the population surveillance, where you're looking for antibodies to find out who's been exposed. So when you find that, you know, you get up to about 50 or 60% exposure in the community, the question now becomes, do we have herd immunity? And, and then can we stop being so concerned about, about new infections and outbreaks? The, the, the fly in the ointment here is, is that, you know, we don't have right now direct evidence that if you're exposed and you have antibodies, that you maintain immunity for however long. We don't know if that immunity is immediate or if it wanes. And so it, it really complicates the job that we're trying to do, which is why the, the, the social distancing or, or physical separation, if you will, is still an important mitigation strategy and why, because we have some evidence that this is really a droplet-spread disease, that even though cloth masks are not ideal, they are quite a bit, quite a bit better than doing nothing for a virus that's highly contagious.
Thanks, Frank.
Frank, Chris, hopefully here. The only, the only other thing I would just add is the consistency of getting the message out, I think, is going to be actually more important over the coming weeks and months, because if in fact there is some sort of a level of rollback on this, we need to really remind folks that, that doesn't mean these practices should be given up. They become even more important in order to defend against the second wave. Isn't that correct?
I, I think you're actually getting to the, to the point that I think mitigation is going to be an ongoing strategy, no matter where we are on testing, no matter where we are as far as rolling the, you know, opening businesses and things like that. There are going to be some, unfortunately, some new normals, at least the best of our understanding right now, that, that observing those, those distancing and those separation recommendations are the thing that is going to allow us to get the economy rolling again. And so I think that mitigation is going to be with us for the, the near term, possibly the medium term as well.
So I have a question too. So let's say the governor opens, starts to allow businesses to begin to open in a week or so. I'm just making that up. Are we ready and prepared to assist businesses with what policies and what procedures they would have to go through to, to start reopening? Like, let's say all the, you know, let's say hair salons or nail salons, and they could start opening again. Do we have procedures, policies in place that we can just roll out to these businesses so they know, you know, what they need to have in place to start to open?
Right now, we don't. I think we're getting a little bit ahead of it with some of those businesses that have really close contacts. I think a long, hard look has to be looked at some of these practices, such as hair salon or aesthetics and skincare, tattooing, things like that. There will be probably guidance and recommendations coming out as to when these businesses can open up, the precautions are going to need to take. I've talked to multiple salon owners about what they can look towards in the future, what they can start to do now to get ready. And they're talking about partitions in between the chairs. They're talking about plexiglass. They're talking about all sorts of physical barriers. So there is instructions on that going on right now and how that's going to look. We haven't figured everything out yet, but we are talking about it on a regular basis and trying to figure out how to move forward. I think they'll do some of the probably other businesses first versus restaurants and salons would be my guess, just because of the close contact. Now, restaurant, maybe they go at 50% capacity, and they have every other table that can be used, every other bar stool or every three-bar stool. I'm not sure how they're going to do that, but I'm sure there's going to be guidance and recommendation on how to do it safely when those businesses do decide to open up or are allowed to open up.
Right.
Sorry.
Well, I was going to just add, Brian, we already have some experience in hospitals as far as, you know, what do you do? Well, you have to control access. You have to ask people about, first of all, you have to screen the people out who have the fever, who are having an active cough and things like that. So you're going to have to find some way of catching them at the door before they get in, understanding that some people who are asymptomatic are going to still get through. The second thing is, is that once they do get through, you're going to still have to have, you know, the droplet precautions where we know that this disease spreads by droplets. So I think you're going to have to have face coverings. You know, if somebody's going to get a haircut with a face covering, that's probably going to be part of the new normal, and frequent hand washing. The gloves, you know, the gloves, I see the gloves all over the place, and it's one of my pet peeves that, you know, I, I see all this glove litter, and it, to me, it's not only ignorant, but it's actually dangerous that somebody might be throwing contaminated gloves down for somebody else to pick them up and get contaminated from them. So I actually don't wear gloves except when I'm actually handling a dangerous situation at work. So if I'm just meeting a person, I will even touch that person, and I'll wash my hands afterwards. And we have had no transmission of the virus in our hospital environment, just doing those simple things. And I think that that's a model for how you might want to open up businesses, whether you're talking about nail salons or barber shops or, or things like that. Now, we haven't worked those things out. I, I think that this should probably be done at the state level about what uniform instructions are, but I'm just trying to give you a flavor of what that might look like.
Yeah, some of the conversations that I've had with some salon owners is masks, face shields, things like that, because a mask might not be comfortable for the stylist to wear all day. So maybe a face shield would work too. So there's different things being discussed and tossed around as to what would be the best way to have that droplet covering situation.
This is Regina Keane. I, I would just want to stress.
This is Regina Keen. I, I would just want to stress what Selectman DeCollegiero mentioned earlier around collaborating with our neighboring towns, because when we do open up and we have, you know, salons, for example, being able to open, I would not want to see something in North Andover that's different from Andover as an example, that just would create a lot of tension, I think, in the business, small business community.
I completely agree, because we get calls every day, well, this town's doing this, why aren't you doing that?
Yeah.
Well, my board's meeting tomorrow night and they're going to do it tomorrow night, but it's going to be an official act by the board. So yeah, we do toss things around like that and we do get calls every day as to what other people are doing and why aren't we doing it? Or why are we doing this and they're not doing it? So yeah, I definitely agree with that and I'll give your advice on that one.
And I'll point out, Brian, that New Hampshire closed its restaurants, I think, within just a couple of days of Massachusetts for the same reason. Everybody started going north. We, we don't want that to happen. We want, we want it to be done in an coordinated way. And I think ideally, the state DPH is, is the, is the place where these recommendations should come out uniformly. Maybe they need to be adopted locally, but they should come out with a recommendation that local boards of health can just simply adopt.
Brian, Frank, Rosemary Smedeely, one thing that I've, I've heard some complaints from and I totally understandable is pet grooming, especially if, you know, a lot of people, their pet, especially now if they're, they're sheltering in place in their home and their pet is their only companion. And if certain breeds, if you don't stay with them, they can, they can get skin conditions and so forth and so on. So, and the beauty of at least with pet groomers is they can drop the, the dog off right at the door. Nobody even needs to go into the building really. But I have heard, and I think it's a legitimate concern, you know, dogs get matted and again, skin diseases. They could have ticks. They could have, at least with the groomer, especially for our elderly and some of our folks that it's difficult for them to, to get around as well, that for them to try to groom their pets themselves could be, it's a lot, a lot to ask of certain, some of our members of the community. So I just hope that you'll, it sounds silly, you know, most of us grew up washing the dog in the backyard or whatever, but not...
Then I agree.
But it's still muddy today, but I think you, you, you get my point and it's an important member of the family. And to some people, it's their own member.
Right. I completely agree. I've talked to the state about this because initially they were not on the essential business list from the governor's office. So pet grooming was considered non-essential and closed. We've gotten complaints about somebody still being open. I've gotten complaints about them not being open. As of right now, they're not on the essential business list. I did speak to one of our mobile groomers and gave them the information on applying to, submitting a form to the governor's office to be considered an essential business. And you can do it individually per business. I don't know if they ever did that or not, but I have had multiple conversations with people for and against. So I guess it depends on which way you kind of, which way in the fence you want to go. But the state did say they were considered non-essential.
Brian, I did talk, I did talk to the state about it as well, because I did help talk to that person and they did submit their application. It said that they are not deeming them essential and that they all are to stay closed.
So can I ask a question about that? Because I know that most of you, you and I, we, we talked about this mobile groomer and I, I don't think it is, I don't think it's silly. I do agree with Selectman Smedeely. When it's a mobile groomer, how is that? If they were able to go to somebody's home and in theory never have contact physically with another human being, right? Because the dog is kept in the backyard or, or cat is traded. Why, why can't that be allowed outside of the state's purview where it's a mobile visit? I mean, how is that any different than like a, you know, as long as landscapers are keeping their social distance, they're allowed to stay open. Why, why would this be considered different?
I think, well, in this instance, the state specifically added it to a list of what was non-essential. So they outright banned it. I, you know, I went back and forth with it, with them a little bit about it with the Executive Office of Business Development and they said that they actually checked a lot of different places, because this has come up a lot on the state level. So we're probably not the only ones asking this question, but that at this point, it still was deemed as non-essential. And I don't know if it's because of animals potentially having COVID-19, living on the fur, I don't know. But they certainly told us that it was not going to be deemed essential and that individual applications were being denied.
I do appreciate that you, you did that legwork. I just, it, it's helpful, I think, in general though, for the public too, to hear that, you know, these aren't falling on deaf ears. We're just a little bit hamstrung by the process the state follows, right? Because it took a little bit before the state even weighed in on that particular gentleman's request for his mobile unit, but I guess we can keep it.
Yeah, they were getting a lot of, I think, a lot of applications at once when it first, the order first came down. But once we emailed them, they were pretty responsive. Unfortunately, the answer was no, but they were pretty responsive once we started the conversation. I know both Brian and I spoke to different people at the state trying to see what we could track down.
And I know across the region, this has come up in other towns too, and they're all facing the same thing as a health director.
Just one, one more comment that, that it's been, I've been told that if you sell pet supplies and have an area for grooming, that they can groom, which doesn't, something doesn't seem right about that, but I don't know if it's true.
No, Petco, some Petcos in the state were doing that. I got a letter from the state, basically asking us to go and issue a cease and desist to any Petco we had in town that was also doing grooming. We went out there, the grooming section was closed, but they, they are still allowed to sell pet food. So there was some problems around the state with people doing that or businesses doing that. And that was, some larger companies have been shut down from that.
Well, that's exactly what, what you've described is what prompted my question. I heard the same thing. So, okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Brian or Frank?
No, just thank you both for all that you're doing. You guys are in the front lines of this in so many different ways. And thank you so very much for, for doing what you're doing for all of us.
I echo those second sentiments. Okay, let's move to Andrew. Andrew, you had some updates for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Clareman. Yes, I just wanted to give a brief update on our efforts with respect to providing resources to small businesses, namely the Small Business Relief Grant that we had recently, we actually as of today, closed the applications where we had it open for just about a month. We received in total 214 applications at the end of the day today, or at the end of the process today. And thus far, we have made decisions on 106 applications that we have funded, totaling $222,529 worth of grants. And again, just to remind the board and the folks at home, the grants are meant to cover one month of rent or a mortgage payment up to a maximum of $3,000. And so we're very excited to be able to offer this to small businesses in North Andover. Myself and Planning Director Gina Enright, we've been combing through the applications and doing our best to sort of prioritize them and go through a list of criteria to sort of score them. And then we provide recommendations to the town manager who provides the final sign-offs on which ones we fund. And so Gina and I have to go through the last batch of applications that we received today. And we will be making final decisions this week. Of the ones that have been funded so far, there have been 411 layoffs at those small businesses. It makes for an average of four layoffs per business. The average business that we've funded has been in business in North Andover for just over 12 years. They have seen an average decline in gross revenue of 34%. And I remind the board that we were looking at March numbers, so March 2019 versus what they collected in March 2020. And because much of the shutdown occurred after the first or second week of March, one can only imagine that the, the performance of these small businesses was far worse in April than it would have been in March. The average rent or mortgage payment of these businesses was $3,300. And so like I said before, we continue to comb through the applications. One, one last thing I'll mention is the types of businesses that we have funded. The vast, for a bulk of them, about 18% were barber shops and hair salons, as you know, many might imagine. Those are the types of businesses that have been hurt the most, these personal services businesses. 13% restaurant, 5%, almost 6% pet care, 7% nail salons. And then a variety of other businesses ranging from chiropractors, gymnastics, mental health professionals, dentists, personal trainers, massage therapy, convenience stores and on down the line, and of course retail stores as well. And so we're trying to basically spread this out, cover as many different businesses that are being affected by this as we possibly can. I remind the board that we are using our municipal discretionary funding from the Columbia Gas money that we received shortly after 2018. So no taxpayer money is being used in this instance. And then if I might, I just want to add one quick update about our work with respect to funneling businesses into the federal resources that are available and namely the Paycheck Protection Program, otherwise known as PPP, and the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program being offered through SBA, the Small Business Administration. We have partnered with the Mill Cities Community Investments, which is a CDFI, a community development fund based out of Lawrence. And they are working with us to provide technical assistance to small businesses. They are doing this for the town of North Andover, the town of Andover and the city of Lawrence. And they have relationships with two banks in particular, Reading Cooperative Bank and Berkshire Bank, that aren't requiring the applicants to be customers of their banks to file PPP applications. So we've been successful in being able to funnel North Andover businesses to apply for the PPP, which provides basically forgivable loans. So it amounts to a grant if you spend at least 75% of those proceeds on your payroll. And they've been able to receive technical assistance from the Mill Cities Group, get their applications into the aforementioned banks. And I can tell you that I know of a handful of businesses that have taken advantage of it. We have, I know of at least 12 businesses that have received a total of over $526,000 worth of either PPP or Economic Injury Disaster Loan Advanced Programs funding. Therefore, we can tell that we're successfully able to get a lot of these businesses involved in these programs, which is helpful, obviously, the North Andover economy, even though there is still a lot of pain and a lot of distress right now, given the current environment.
Andrew, thank you for that upgrade. That was a great update. And certainly, you know, I've heard from some businesses that have received the grant and they're very grateful and very, very, you know, happy that that has helped them quite a bit. So thank you for all the work that you and Gina put in to review all those applications and get that money to these businesses that are truly in need. So thanks.
Sure.
Any other, any questions or comments for Andrew?
I would just echo that. I've heard some very appreciative comments from people who have taken advantage of this and I really appreciate the hard work you guys put into getting that grant program up and running and for working with the Mill City Investments Group to provide support to our businesses. I think that's really fabulous. Thank you.
Absolutely. I should also quickly thank our IT team, Chris McClure and Christine McAlenny, who helped me stand up the grant application online and helped me with a lot of that processing. So they did a great job. And my, my admin, Bernadette Kern, who's been working with Lynn Savage, excuse me, on getting payments processed to the businesses as well. So it's been a team effort all around. So thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions for Andrew? All right, let's move to Laurie for her update on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay. So as of today, we had 52 applications. So far, 10 approval letters have been issued for a total grant funds that we've encumbered of $27,450. Seven applications are approved pending receipt of one or two additional documents, mostly the W9s from the landlord is what's holding those up. So we've encumbered $12,963 for those pending applications. We've had six...
Hey Laurie, can I just ask you, can you just review what this program is for the board and listeners?
Sure. So the Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Trust both voted to fund an emergency rental assistance program. We voted on funding $100,000 to the program and it's essentially to cover the gap for people who have lost income due to the COVID crisis that's going on right now. So the applications are online. We have them in both English and Spanish and will provide up to $1,000 a month for three months to help with rent. And each month we would pay up to 50% of that person's rent, which I haven't seen that that's been an issue. I haven't really seen many rents over $2,000. So anyway, we still have about 29 applications to be reviewed. I've been collecting all the applications, making sure that all the documents are, are there that we need and the income verifications are there, and then it gets sent over to Greater Lawrence Community Action Council and they will do the final review and issue the approvals and send the checks to the landlords. The Affordable Housing Trust is going to have a meeting next Tuesday. And one of the things we're going to talk about is whether we should allocate additional funds to the program. Right now, we have a little over $59,000 left with 29 applications and we know more are coming in. That's about it.
Great. Thank you. And again, a great program to help those people, which will need. Any questions from the board for Laurie? Okay, we'll move on. Dee, you're going to give us an update on the meals program, I think?
Yes, I am. So I, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Okay, good. I'm using a new headset, so I'm just trying to make sure it works okay. So I get to give reports from both the high school, the efforts going on at the high school for the meal distribution, as well as the senior center, which is doing amazing things. So I'll start off with Deanna Cruz, who as you know, is the community support coordinator. She came up with the excellent idea early on to start a food bank at the senior center. To date, over 4,000 items have been donated, food, housing supplies, personal hygiene products, pet supplies, et cetera, that have gone out to help 150 North Andover residents. Meals have been, meals have been donated by Amiches, Stachies and Sal's, about 150 of them. The Friends of the Stevens Memorial Library donated eight boxes of books that went out to families. $900 in gift cards have been donated by, donated through people to Butcher Boy and Market Basket. And there are four families that are sponsoring residents with special dietary needs and some staff at the senior center to mention Deanna. Some of these names you're going to hear more than once, because these people are absolutely amazing and they're doing multiple jobs to help. Deanna, Tony Wolfenden, Steve Casey, Paul Hutchins, Carla Alstrom and Liam Morse. Moving on to the high school and the efforts there to distribute food. This number is, is unbelievable. 29,411 meals have been given to kids, teens, seniors and residents from beginning with the library, moving on to the high school. And there are 28 school employees. And if with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I would like to say their names. These are people that are both working on the line as well as in the kitchen, including school nurses as well as cafeteria employees to produce all of these meals.
Yeah, absolutely. Please give us, read out the names. These people are awesome and definitely deserve the credit. Thank you.
So here we go. Holly Cagliano, Tracy McCann, Darlene Pass, Dorca Ortiz, Shannon McAlligot, Heather LaVierder, Nancy Cruz, Katrina Carney, Sarah Moshe... Heather LaVierder, Nancy Cruz, Katrina Carney, Sarah Mosha, Nicole Belize, Patriva Ready, Pat Thomas, Karen Landry, Sandy Lavalley, Cheryl Deveraux, Chris Senka, Kristy Faucher, Maggie Hagerty, Carmen Lopez, Joyce Filbrick, Karen Carente, Heidi Hood, Jody Lum, Sophia Hamdi, Diana Salvo, Jackie Langlois, Carl Langlois, Desiree Smith, Mary Ann Cummings, Kathy O'Neil, Erica Murphy, who is the Director of the Nutrition Program and she is amazing, Julie Ambrose, Julie Mizoki and Erin Callahan. Town staff has also been assisting as this was a joint program that we started with the town manager asking me to reach out to the school staff. So on the town side, we have our own cadre of people that are there three times a week handing out meals. Laurie Berzlaaf, Demi Tetra Marsh, Stephen Foster, Christine McAnany, Tony Wolfenden, Lauren Sanford, Rick Gorman, Kyle Palladino, Asia Valdez, Patty Siflin, Mark Wilson, Paul Hutchins and Joel Bedard. And at the senior center, Irene and her crew have been doing so many different things. They have received seven hundred and fifty donated items that they're waiting to sort that came in over the weekend. Her staff has made almost four thousand calls to seniors checking in to make sure that everyone is okay. The Meals on Wheels program has provided thirty-four hundred meals. They've distributed over a thousand face masks. Their doll making group switched over to face mask making. Twenty-five pizzas donated again, Sal's stepping up were delivered to Fountain Drive. The forty-eight brown bags from the Boston Food Bank are continued to be delivered. Jose is still taking people grocery shopping four times a week. And staff at the senior center to mention, obviously Irene, Carla Alstrom, Leah Morris, Paula Crudell, Adele Johnson, Cindy Saab, Jose Morel and Nancy Barry. So that is the update from the meals section.
Oh, fantastic, Dee. And thank you too for all your work coordinating everything and being out there every day. So you deserve a good shout out as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on that a little bit. I actually, as a liaison to the senior center, stopped by and the organization, it looks like a little grocery store in there. I have to say the donations from people all around to this project at the senior center and the coordination with staff is just, it's phenomenal. It, we were making jokes that it was, it's like North Andover's little market, but the amount of food and seeing that, as Dee just mentioned, the, the, the group that does the dolls, the masks that they're making for everybody, it was absolutely phenomenal. And the organization and, and they were really in tune to social distancing, of wearing masks and gloves when appropriate. You know, as they're sorting the food and everything, they were being extremely careful and boy, I was very proud moment. Not only for our staff, but for the people of North Andover and even outside of North Andover that have contributed so greatly to making sure people have food. So again, following up with Dee, thank you so very much as to what everybody's doing to keep our people fed and healthy. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Any other comments at this point? All right, we'll turn to our town manager for an update on COVID-19.
Sure, my update is fairly brief. I wanted to let the team get everything in and we've been doing so much. I don't, I don't know how we even can fit it all into one meeting. As far as coordinating with other communities, we are doing a meeting with mayors and managers every Sunday, as well as a weekly call with DPH. Doing a lot of planning, trying to make sure we're rolling things out as a group. We are waiting for guidance from the governor regarding reopening. Monday is May fourth. I don't see a scenario where as town offices, we're ready to reopen. And so while we are talking about how we do reopen and we're starting these conversations and how we start to implement kind of our new normal, we are waiting to hear from him and the most current information that we got was that we would be hearing from him earlier this week. We are still operating remotely. Just some, some numbers that are interesting. As of Friday, we had sent out a hundred and eleven posts on the COVID-19 news site. So not stuff we're just sending to social media, but stuff that was going out to our COVID-19 group. And I feel like we cannot over communicate right now. So we're, we're trying to continually update all the time with all of the resources that we think people need. We've received through our COVID hotline, two hundred and nineteen calls and emails. So that's not including calls and emails that have come in just the general office. I could tell you that Laurie's gotten so many calls about the rental program. Andrew's processed so many calls through his office about the business grant program. But specifically when people are calling the COVID-19 hotline, we've received two hundred and nineteen calls and emails through there. We are planning for the election. We had a call on that today. We have mailed out over seven hundred absentee ballot applications and mail-in ballot applications and we've received over three hundred back at this point. We're continuing that. Apparently in the mail today were many more, about fifty more. So we've got quite a few to process this week. We ran our social distancing contest last week and had two winners in the art section and two winners in the video section. If you haven't seen them, they're amazing and so inspirational. It was really joyful and the youth center were able to judge those and I think that was hard. I was glad I didn't have to do it myself. There is drive-through testing site, as Brian mentioned, on Wednesday in North Andover. It is AFC on Turnpike Street. You do need to call to be pre-screened. The calling number is seven eight one four three zero eight one six one. We will be sharing that again through social media and our other resources tomorrow. I know we shared it today. It is the rapid screening. So it is one day results. So again, that phone number is seven eight one four three zero eight one six zero. One thing that we are seeing an uptick right now is domestic violence. We did share domestic violence resources with the community today. We encourage people to please call if they're having any issues. The courts are open for restraining orders. And so we are able to help people get restraining orders if they do need them. Unfortunately, this has become a more prevalent issue. Masks are now available at the senior center. So as Dee was saying, they have been sewing masks non-stop and they are available. And if you come during certain hours and we post that information today in NOC, they will hand out up to four to you, which is amazing. One of the issues that we've been dealing with that Brian talked about earlier is with the nursing homes. And the state has introduced a nursing home family resource line. So that connects family members of nursing home patients with resources that they need. That line is staffed nine to five, seven days a week. And that phone number is six one seven six six zero five three nine nine. That's six one seven six six zero five three nine nine. We're putting together a video in town that we're going to be asking the board to be involved with. So Sarah will be getting in touch with each of you tomorrow to help with that video. And then finally, I just, I can't thank our amazing employees enough. We've been meeting and talking and just, they have risen to the occasion in so many different ways. I can't even begin to start to name the people who have given back and we are starting a new project, which we started today, that is the North Andover Spotlight Employees. So today we did the lunch team that Dee was talking about earlier, but we are going to be doing them on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Just highlighting different employees, what they're doing for the town so that people know what's going on and what great employees we have. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, town manager. And we'll probably out touch basically, but we should think of some way of thanking folks with some kind of a a written card or something like that, but we can definitely talk about that later. But thank you for your, for your input. Okay, so thank you for all of that. That was great. That was a great update on all of COVID-19 that's going on. It's certainly unprecedented times and it's great to have such a wonderful team in town working to help the folks around town and keeping everybody informed and safe. So thank you. So next on the agenda, we have the FY twenty-third quarter financials and revenue update. I think we have Lynn on the call. Lynn, do you want to take us through this?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to report to you the third quarter financials as I just want to reiterate that this is strictly based on through the March time period compared to previous years. And then I'll get into a little further on future revenues and budgets. So basically, the property tax collections are through March are right on target. They're at seventy-three point seven percent compared to seventy-six point nine percent last year. Motor vehicle excise for the third quarter is running at sixty-seven point eight. That is down from last year. Last year was at eighty-eight point three. A lot of the reasoning behind that is timing. We just started the beginning of March being on a skeleton work crew. And the logistics are starting to get everything in place and get in, get the mail, get it to the people, get it to the individual staff members to get the deposits in and recorded. Took a little bit of time and we have now up, up to full speed. And I'd like to report that as of today, motor vehicle excise tax collections are back on target. They're at eighty-six percent, which compared to last year, which was ninety percent. So we're only within a four percent difference between last year, which is good because it indicates that the taxes are being paid for the motor vehicle excise at this point. Meals tax collections are at eighty point nine percent, which is tracking target. I know there is some concern that potentially the fourth quarter might not come in as strong. We did budget conservatively on this particular line item. We're at the eighty, like I said, the eighty percent. We only have a hundred and twelve thousand that needs to be met to meet our budget and we typically bring in anywhere from a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per quarter. So even if it is down a little bit, I see no concern with that line item at this particular moment. Ambulance collections are at eighty-eight point one percent, again, down slightly. That I believe again is a timing issue with collections from the ambulance billing collection company and, and getting the deposits recorded, getting the logistics down. We have brought that collections back up through today. Basically, the, the collections are back in line with where they, they should be at this point in the fiscal year. Inspection fees, which are building plumbing and electrical are at, running at sixty-seven point five six percent, which is down from last year. But if I factor out any of the large projects from last year, we are right in line at the, which last year would have been fifty-nine percent. So we're slightly above last year at this point. Interest income again is tracking way above budget at a hundred and seventy-six point nine percent. Reason being is, is that we have done some, the treasurer collector has done some great financial investing into CDs and put a lot of our money into CDs at really high interest rates, which are basically going to hold the interest rate for eighteen to, to twenty months out. So I'm feeling very confident as well as the treasurer collector is very confident that the interest income will stay steady at, at the level it's been collecting. Local receipts, when we factor out the motor vehicle excise, we're right in line with last year. We're at ninety-eight point four percent compared to last year at ninety-three point eight percent. So having said that, at this point, I see no reason or no issues with the revenue collections. I'd like to follow back with the Board of Selectmen after the beginning of May, maybe the, to the middle of May, one of your meetings then to see what collections are for the tax commitment that would do May first. As I'm seeing presently, we have already collected eleven million dollars of that particular commitment that isn't due until May first. So it, it is running pretty, pretty strong and we're, we're recording receipts daily on that. And I'd like to update you further on that, further on in the month of May. On the expense side, everything is running approximately seventy percent, which is typical for normal business operations. Nothing is out of sorts other than, of course, we have our typical snow and ice deficit, which is at minimal this year, which is great. It's only two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which will be covered with other line item surpluses within the budget. I do know that, and I didn't mention it in my memo, but we are foreseeing a deficit in overtime for the fire department due just to a lot of people out on ILDs and some other issues that were going, that are going on there. But I expect that we'll be able to cover that as well with surpluses with other line items. But I did want to disclose that that is something I'm keeping an eye on very closely, as well as the town manager is aware of it. Moving into the enterprise funds, water revenue collections are at sixty-six point five percent and expenditures at sixty-eight. Sewer revenue collections, sixty-eight point six percent with expenses at fifty-nine. This is normal operations and not unusual for this time of the fiscal year and in line with what I would expect to see. I'll move on to the Stevens Estate. Stevens Estate collections are at thirty-seven point three percent with expenditures running at sixty-one. With the COVID-19 crisis that's been going on, we would have expected this, that several of the bookings had to be canceled because you can't, the social distancing issues. Having said that, we will, you know, with additional expenses to get us between now and the end of the fiscal year, I would expect that we are going to be drawing down on the retained earnings to cover any potential deficits. I don't have a handle or know exactly what that is until we get through May and then see what the final expenses will be in June. But I just want to make sure that everybody is aware. And I will monitor it very closely and update you as needed, if any sooner. So I hope the above information is helpful. And if there's any questions or concerns, I'm here to answer.
Lynn, on the Stevens Estate.
You're welcome.
Stevens Estate, I just reviewed the numbers today. We do have nine cancellations right now. So I, you know, just, just for the board's edification, reviewing what Joanna sent to me about an hour ago. She has about nine things that have, have canceled. They've rescheduled for after the end of the fiscal year, but she does have nine cancellations.
Yeah, that's what we expected.
Yes.
But that's to be expected. Yeah, absolutely. It's unfortunate, but it's the way, it's the world. Any questions from the board for Lynn?
Lynn, so for, for March tax collections, which would normally be when that quarter is due. Well, it's lining up. Are there any concerns that you have compared to data from like the two thousand eight recession? Because we've, we've heard this and I know the town manager and I've spoken about this at length as well, that a lot of our tax payments are paid via escrow through the mortgage companies or the mortgage providers for our homeowners. And so for most folks, their escrow account would have already had the tax payments at this point to make the March payments. And so any, any concerns or any data suggests that, you know, we wouldn't see the economic impacts of tax collection, local tax collection via property taxes until next quarter?
Um, I, like I said, I'd like to wait to see where we are through May, the middle of May. But I did, I know you did mention back the two thousand eight, two thousand nine recession period. And the collections at that point for real estate taxes specifically were at ninety-eight point six percent in two thousand eight and two thousand nine was at ninety-nine point four. And I took it one step further and did a little bit further looking today. In two thousand and ten, in case it rolled into the two thousand and ten timeframe, was still at ninety-nine percent collection on the real estate taxes.
You mean for, for the, for the year, meaning that
For the year, fiscal year. Yep. Yep. So we got to understand too as well that we also, we don't only have the year that was committed, which is the fiscal year, for, for example, twenty twenty, we also have prior year collections for the previous year's commitment that hadn't paid, been paid yet, then that flows in. And that usually ranges close to six, seven, even as high as nine hundred thousand dollars over and above the annual commitment that comes in. I mean, we've got a lot of people that are out refinancing. My treasurer collector has constantly doing ten to fifteen MLCs a day right now. So if they're refinancing, they have to be paying their taxes.
Okay.
Because you can't refinance, we won't release an MLC if you're not current on your tax. Because you can't refinance, we won't release an MLC if you're not current on your tax property taxes.
What is an MLC? Just what is that acronym, Sam?
Certification that they're, they're, they've paid their property taxes and there, there's no liens on their property.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Great, thank you.
So, so Lynn, for the meals tax, our businesses are expected to pay their meals tax monthly, correct? Or is it quarterly?
They pay it quarterly.
So when?
I mean, we, we receive it quarterly, they pay it monthly, so it's accumulated. And we usually, I'll receive it somewhere in the beginning, the first two weeks of July.
For the meals taxes that are collected right now?
Yep, yep. And as I said, I think, I do realize that all the, all the restaurants and a lot of the sub shops are closed, but they are doing a lot of takeout. Give you an example, I, I don't typically go out to eat maybe once a week, and I find I've been going out more just because you feel bad and you want to give them some business. You have Market Basket and Butcher Boy who has prepared meals, the prepared meals have meals tax on them. So even if it does decline a little bit or even a certain percentage, in order for us to meet budget this year, we only have to collect another hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Which I foresee is not an issue. And even if we don't, I have surpluses and other line items within this fiscal year that would absorb that. I mean, I'll give you an example, planning board fees. We budgeted, you know, twenty some odd thousand dollars, we got five hundred and ninety five thousand dollars because of Amazon. I have miscellaneous non-recurring revenue from FEMA of over three hundred thousand. So I'm not concerned with this year and moving into next year on the, my analysis that I did. I, I don't foresee an issue on the real estate or motor vehicle excise or even the revenues in general that will affect twenty twenty one budget. I think we need to look into the future and start planning for twenty twenty two.
And Mr. Chair, I could just reiterate what Lynn is saying. I agree. I'm, I'm much less concerned about fiscal year twenty one and much more concerned about fiscal year twenty two. As you know, the way that our budget works and the way that our assessments work is that your valuation is about eighteen months behind. And so if we do start seeing the impact of COVID nineteen, I do not believe it will be in the fiscal year twenty one budget, but instead would be in the fiscal year twenty two budget, which is a positive because we could start planning for that. You know, but right now, what we're seeing, we are fairly well insulated due to the way that our revenues are comprised.
And I'd like to, I'd like to just reiterate as well that putting the budget through and voting the twenty twenty one budget as is, the, the checks and balances that I have in place, as well as the, the Department of Revenue. So come September, October, I have to prepare the tax rate and start working to set the tax rate for December. The DOR will not certify the tax rate if I cannot confirm that we are going to meet budget. So come September, October, I should know that by, by that time, and I will be able to determine what types of cuts we might have to put in place, because I can't spend a budget that the DOR isn't going to approve. So in order to avoid having a special town meeting come September, October timeframe, if we cut the budget now and then find out in October that we're going to be fine and we're going to actually exceed the revenue, revenue budget, we'd have to go back to town meeting to put that money back into the budget. It's easier and I've done it in the early years when we were struggling. I've been here a long time and I've been in the good and the bad, and I've had to send out those letters that said, you know, I need to cut two percent out of everybody's budget, let me know where I can pull it. And I would put it in a freeze and hold it. I mean, I made a few recommendations within my memo of some things that we can put off until January, till the tax rate is set, which will have some, some savings. But I think, hopefully, knowing my experience and my work ethic and how I run my budgets for the town, I've been here a long time, that I will, I watch them on a regular basis. And I, I have a tight string on them and we have great checks and balances in place to make sure that nothing gets overspent. It would be well protected.
Lynn, this is, this is Chris, and I have to say, I really appreciate, you know, this additional effort and added dimension to explaining your, your thought process and kind of where we are. This is really a critical statement you're making tonight, because this is really bringing to light what these numbers represent and why we're comfortable with them. And I think it's important that, you know, all of us in North Andover see that and understand it, because it's very easy to get swayed, as you know, by sort of a short-term trend versus long-term experience. So I think coming back to us in May and, and helping us see what that looks like and then probably in early June helps. But I think you made a significant statement here, and this is, you know, you're asking us to take a stand based upon this, and you've given us much more depth to have some confidence in that, and, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, Lynn. Any other comments from the board? Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to updates on the Columbia Gas Road repairs. Do we have Jim on the line tonight?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman. I don't.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
We can hear you just fine.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, I'm here to give a, just an update on the gas emergency impact road restoration project. You may recall that last year I gave an update to the board. We had established a process whereby the project itself will be broken up into a number of different contracts. We're going to take a neighborhood approach to the work. We're going to combine projects. So we have a sidewalk project that we're going to be doing in addition to the sidewalks that we're going to be reconstructing. We're going to be putting new sidewalks in. We're going to implement the treatment placement program. And really, the foundation of the project is that we're going to be a lot of public input. We've already had our first public information meeting. We received quite a bit of good information just from that meeting. And actually, the project has started. So we've, we've already started contract one. The work started early in April, but we are, we are behind due to the COVID nineteen. There was a freeze on construction work for a little bit there. And there are some other aspects of the project that are just slower, just dealing with the, just the procedures during construction that you have to follow. In addition to that, we do, a lot of the prep work needs to be done by the, by DPW staff. Right now, we are a little shorthanded, things like cleaning catch bases in advance and doing the drainage work. So we are, we are progressing. And again, I think the other thing with this time of year, it's a lot harder doing drainage work with the rain that we had and are having right now. So it is a little bit slower. Would have been far better if we could have started earlier in the year in the fall. That's essentially how our project was set up. We did it in the spring, we get to work in, in the summer into the fall. And then work on the next stage as it's designed. The other big aspect to the program that's been slow, we haven't had the next public information meeting for contract two, which primarily, I guess, north of Sutton Street towards forty five and the river. That area, we really need to have input from the residents. There are a lot of impacts trying to make the project ADA compliant. So we really need to have public input. I don't see us being able to get a meeting in place until probably after town meeting. We'd like to have it in June, because once July hits, really participation goes down. So that's kind of set us back a little. We had anticipated having that in April. And like I said, the public information has really helped us. We're going to be implementing things like putting in granite curbing, so parking, there are going to be on-street parking changes, doing the ramps and that sort of thing is certainly going to impact some of the budding properties. And we really need to talk those over with individual property owners. So that's why those public information meetings are extremely important. Again, the new schedule, once we have that next meeting, we'll finish up with design for the next contract and then we'll go up to bid and hopefully be on the construction and file and catch up on some of the work that we're somewhat behind on. And then we'll move on to the rest of the contracts. And we did give notice to the, to Columbia Gas that this is a force majeure event in that we do expect some delays overall in completion of the entire project. But overall, I want to stress that any delay in getting all the work done, we'll really be limited to a couple of streets, like Main Street and probably Waverly Road. We have some, some real challenges with those, with those streets. So it'll need a lot of extra survey, design, and extra time. So we've made notice to Columbia Gas of that. But overall, we're, again, we're going to try and catch up on anything that we've fallen behind on. So that's it in a nutshell, if you have any interesting questions you're going to have on this.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
Two, two things jumped to mind, Dick. So Jim, the first was about the granite curbing. Is that the standard that we're going to follow throughout the rest, the recovery area that we're going to be placing granite curbing where it doesn't already exist? Or does the repatement plan already determine whether or not it's going to be curbing at all, granite curbing or asphalt curbing?
So we're making those decisions on a case-by-case basis. And I've got a good example that just occurred last week. Primarily, we want to use granite curbing. In fact, most of the coating that we've put in the contract is the vertical granite curbing. It's, it's the straighter edge as opposed to the sloped granite curbing. And we want, again, we, we have, we do have budget constraints. When we went to the first public information meeting, people really, the residents really didn't want the granite curbing. There were some concerns, some concerns that once you put granite curbing, you've eliminated any chance of parking. Right now, a lot of areas, people actually pull up on the sidewalk, which really isn't ADA compliant, and we really want to get away from that. And granite curbing is the best way to do that. Now, with that said, you know, we also want, you know, we want the best product and we want it to be, make sense for the areas. So I can give you an example, we're, we're making some design changes on Park Street. Right now, Park Street has asphalt firm and it has sidewalk on one side of the road. We were actually able to meet with a couple of individual residents last week, and they mentioned that school kids, they walk on the other side of the road where the sidewalk is. And so they're not even, the sidewalk isn't even on the right side. And then a couple of residents brought up the concern of the speed on the road. It's a, it's a one-way street that's really pretty wide. So what we've decided to do, and we still have to meet with the residents, is come up with the design changes. Well, we're going to install vertical granite curbing. So in that instance, we're going to be removing the asphalt firm curbing and putting vertical granite on each side. And it makes sense, given the amount of walkers. So that makes a lot of sense. Now, if we have other areas, let's say on Ausgood Street, where we have, the existing sidewalk has a grass strip. So there's already that separation between the traveled way and, and the sidewalk. So that's really, it wouldn't be a good location for the, for vertical granite curbing. In addition to that, when you start putting vertical granite curbing, you're causing a lot of drainage problems. So we have to have the drainage infrastructure to be able to accommodate that. So ideally, yes, I, I'm a big fan, I think granite curbing gives the best safety for, especially for pedestrians. But we do have to look at it, right, on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Jim, for that. My, my second question that I had was unrelated to the curbing, but just the general feedback is, if I've missed this, I apologize, but is there a website or hotline that people are, does it need to be emailed? Maybe it's just to you, that people could be submitting their feedback now? And we could start encouraging people, just in the event that they can't make it to whatever or whenever we schedule these public forums? I mean, no, anyone can email you at any time, but do we want to start encouraging people to be sending you their feedback or concerns or?
Well, actually, so on the website, we do have the website up, up and running. You can get that from the, the main projects page on the town's website. And I believe all the contact information that we're going to have per contract is put on there. And I know John Burjazi, the town engineer, was working on like a listserv where you could bring, where you could put your questions in. Now, with that said, I, we have, we have been receiving emails. I mean, the project engineer, town engineer, myself. And then what ends up happening is we do send out, as we get closer and closer to the project, we send out individual letters with any information with our contacts. So, so far, it's been working well, and that is a good point. So we'll, we'll see if that is definitely out of, it can be added to the website. And that, that's a very good point, because like I said, this, the COVID nineteen really has cut into that public interaction. We were fortunate to meet with a few residents last week, but overall, it is, it makes it a little more difficult.
Well, thank, I, I personally just want to say thank you, Jim, because the feedback was that people were appreciative of your willingness to, to meet and listen with them, despite the hurdles that you have to jump through because of COVID. So, and thank you for that feedback.
And just, you know, that website is active, Jim. The website is active, the contacts are all available. And it's you, Curtis, and John, as well as the contractor.
Hey Phil, we're getting a little feedback from the home viewing audience. I'd like you to speak up a little bit if you have another question.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry about that. I don't have another question, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim and the board? Hey, Jim, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Lot going on, and I'm glad you're keeping it all straight for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to approval of our minutes from the, our April sixth, two thousand twenty open session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Medili, approval of the minutes, April sixth, twenty twenty, open session minutes as written.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Everybody's good with the minutes, the way they're written? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Phil, how do you vote?
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Ms. Medili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, licensing. Do I have a motion to move to licensing, please?
Regina Keen, move into licensing.
Motion, do we have a second? Okay, a motion in a second. We'll go for a vote. Phil?
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Ms. Medili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Okay, we have two items to consider during licensing. We have an application of Robert T. Holland for renewal of the Junk Dealer Collector's License for one fourteen jewelry and antiques at twenty-three fifty Turnpike Street, Suite one-ten.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, a roll call vote, I guess, we have to do. Phil?
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Ms. Medili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Regina Keen, aye. Okay, and next we have the application for two Fortune Teller license renewals. Dolly Miller of Psychic Greetings, one sixty-three Turnpike Street, and Elizabeth Santana of Mystic Moon Medium, seventy-five Park Street, Emmer three sixteen. All the applications are in order.
And Chair, I move approval of both of those licenses? And Chair, I move approval of both of those licenses?
Phil DiColigero, second.
Uh, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Regina Keane, aye. Okay, done with licensing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we move out of license?
Second.
Second.
Great, we'll take a vote.
Phil DiColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Regina Keane, aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're back to new business. Um, first on the new business is a vote to extend the due date for real estate and tax, excise taxes, um, you know, given the COVID-19 and the financial hardship that some folks may be feeling. Uh, we'd like to have a discussion and a vote on whether or not we'd want to extend the due date for those two items. Um, so Madam, uh, Town Manager, I'll throw it over to you for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so at the beginning of April, the state passed a municipal relief bill. Um, that had a lot of different aspects to it, um, that we've been able to use, um, to better operate and that we may be able to use, um, as we move through the end of the fiscal year to continue to operate. One of those, um, sections allowed the town to do three things. Um, to extend the due dates for tax bills to June 1st, to waive payments of interest in the event of a late payment on excise, on tax, on a water bill or sewer bill, as long as that bill was due on or after March 10th. Uh, and in order to have that tax, the tax interest waived, the payment has to be made by June 30th. Uh, and then finally, the third thing would be to extend the due date for applications of exemptions of taxes from April 1st to a date no later than June 1st. So the reason that these are attractive, I think, is that since we're not there, um, and it is difficult, can be difficult people to make payments, although we are getting many payments in the mail and, um, through escrow and online, um, this would allow us to extend that due date, one. It would allow us to, to waive any interest, but still would ensure that we're getting the payments by June 30th, which is very important. Um, we have gotten several calls from people asking if we haven't acted this yet. Um, three, I think I processed three or four of them that came in through the COVID hotline, um, and I believe Lynn got called as well, I know she's on the line, asking if they had been approved or not. Um, and so what we're recommending is that in the very least, we waive the payments of interest, um, which would be technically extending the due date for the tax bill anyway, um, but that all three would be beneficial to the community. Um, if you do decide that you want to do this, there is specific motions within your executive summary that do need to be, um, read.
Okay, um, discussion by the board. Do we understand what's being, uh, put before us? So we've got three options. We can choose any one of those three or all three, um, as we move forward. So, I mean, I think, uh, just so I can, I'll kick it off. Chris, I just think, you know, again, we've hit some tough times here and I think, you know, we've got some residents that are potentially, um, you know, in a bind maybe for being able to pay their taxes or their excise taxes. However, you know, we've also heard earlier that two-thirds of our, uh, real estate taxes are paid through escrow. So this is really impacting, potentially impacting a very small people, but giving them an opportunity to extend that date until June 30th and hopefully by then. And, you know, we're at least on our way back to North Andover to actually pay their taxes. So that was my comments. Chris, you can jump in.
I just would, I think you, you hit the nail on the head. My only question was really going to be, um, this is, it was really more for Melissa, was this, is this sort of the, a, a typical tool that, that we have? You know, is this something that communities, um, have comfort and have a track record of exercising in times, uh, like this? I just, again, just trying to give context to the authority that we've got here in, in making this decision.
Right. So in the 12 years that I've been doing this, um, and through the last recession, I'm sure Lynn can weigh in as well. This is the first time that the legislature has ever given permission to the chief executive officers of a community to extend the tax deal, due date, or to waive interest. Currently, the only way to waive interest is to petition DOR and that's very seldomly allowed.
And I'll reiterate, this is very unusual. Yep. It's, in my experience, for 19 years, I've never done this.
Uh, this is Rosemary Smedili. Lynn, um, if my memory serves me well, even during tough times though, our collection numbers tend to be fairly close to normal. Um, to use, I know these are extremely tough times, um, in that some people could lose their job and if their pay is putting, is directly deposited into the family's account, um, and they've lost their job, that can be, that would certainly affect the taxes being paid. But do you have any thoughts on this? Is this something we need to start right away? Or should we wait a little bit to see if there are problems so we can help assist people with payment plans? Or, I'm just trying to think of, um, you know, maybe, maybe letting it roll to see what happens and then, then have a jump on payment plan versus when that escrow runs out or the people have it, that that's when we could really get hit. Or maybe we won't get hit as badly as we think because we've had good luck in the past. So correct me if I'm wrong and I'd like your opinion on it.
Um, well, Rosemary, as I had stated earlier, I mean, I, in, in my analysis, I did go back to the, the, the tougher years when we were, when everyone was struggling and the, and it, our collections were still upwards of, of 96 to 98%. I, again, I, I just, we really won't know until we get through the, this next month or so to see where the collections are, but right now, they're still running strong. And, and as far as, and Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, this deal, as far as pushing the due date out, is just this, this quarter, um, approval. So it doesn't flow into the next tax payment that will be due in the first quarter of 2021. This is just to help everybody get through the fourth quarter for 2020.
Yes, Lynn, that's correct. So this is, these dates are set by statute. Um, they all, all of these mechanisms end on June 30th. And unfortunately, um, the Department of Revenue doesn't allow us to enter into payment plans anymore. That used to be kind of a common thing, but the, you can enter into a payment plan, but what happens is the interest continues to accrue at the 16%. Um, so it's really frowned upon. Um, so, you know, these are really the only mechanisms we have right now to assist taxpayers. Um, you know, I don't know if, if we'll see additional legislation roll out later, but this legislation took a long time, um, to craft and to finalize. So I, I, I don't anticipate that we'll see additional legislation at this point.
Okay, um, okay. Let me just think on it a little bit. Um, I just hate to start. I just want to make sure that if we see the tide turning in this particular case because of COVID, that it's much more drastic because so many people potentially being out of work even as we move forward. Um, I just would, want to make sure that we capture some of those people. But from what you're saying, we could capture them all we want and there's not really too many options other than giving them a little bit more time to pay. But, um, it's just hard to know. I mean, people are being hit so hard. We're doing great, they try to assist them, but if it doesn't get better in a few months, there's, it's then, Lynn, that I could see that we would start to see, that you and I have not seen in the past or has Melissa in her other community, but it's then that I start to think that we could start to see some of the tax bills not being paid, um, and a drop off a little bit. Um, these, it is, it is still different than what we had several years ago. It's, it's all at once almost as well. So, I don't know. I don't know, but if the, if the state doesn't give us any options, I don't, I don't know if it's worth pushing, putting it out a little further or having it happen right now. I, I don't know.
I think, you know, the state is giving us the three options and we can enact locally. And I think, you know, just by, eh, the interest fees, I mean, there's nothing worse than having, you know, missing a payment and also accruing these interest fees month after month, while at least eliminating them, which is basically, yeah, you know, it gives people some relief, um, that, you know, they can wait this out a little bit. And then, as Melissa said, you know, we're kind of bound by what the state has passed as far as, uh, legislation. And right now, we don't have the option of providing a payment plan, um, for folks. So I think, you know, my recommendation is that we adopt the three options that are presented in front of us and, um, you know, at least give the taxpayers in North Andover some relief, albeit, you know, a short period of time, but still it's better than nothing and it's following what the state legislative guidelines have given us.
And, and I, you know, Dick, I tend to agree with you. I, you know, trying to strategically plan it so that we, we can plan our budget accordingly, but if, if we're limited, we're limited. Um, and if, and if it tends to be a problem, then we speak to our legislators, we need more help in aiding our citizens. Uh, but historically, and hopefully that will still be the case, and hopefully we'll start to see a turnaround in this mess, that we won't have to face, um, a lot of citizens not being able to pay. But we also, to put the citizen's mind at ease, we do have reserves and we do have other options to carry us through this for a while. So, um, if it does get really bad, um...
Sorry, am I, am I misunderstanding this? This is not saying you're, you're exempt from paying. It's just saying that your, your date, due date is extended.
That's correct. And, and, and you're not paying any interest in...
Right, but I mean, we're not...
Until that date.
But our, our budget isn't reliant on interest for, I mean, the, the comments that, um, Selectman Smedili was making was implying to me that voting on this now would have some negative impact on our budget. But that is not the case.
No, 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 that's not, no, 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 that's not what I, that's not what I'm, was saying. What I was thinking of is if we're, if people are going to be struggling with this, is, is there a benefit in trying to capture them earlier before, but if there's no alternative other than what's being offered to us, I don't, I guess there's really not a value in that. You know, what I'm saying is that people, by extending the time, but I suppose that would, you know, if there's no benefit of us offering them other options other than what we're being offered by the state, I guess there is no benefit of being made aware that we might have some potential problems coming our way if people are not, um, if they run out of escrow with their mortgage, you know, um, or that they just don't have the funds. But I guess there's no benefit to that, um, if we don't have any options to really address it other than maybe brace ourselves a little bit. But it's just, these are really different times because there's so many people out of work. It's not a small percentage. It's a pretty substantial percentage that's being presented to us on the news. I mean, I don't know what our percentage would be in town specifically, but, um, it's, it's just trying to think ahead. Okay, if this is going to happen, which really has not happened in the past, but in this terrible time, if this is, if this is going to start to happen and we're not bringing in the funds that we are accustomed to working with, is there a benefit in knowing about it ahead of time so that we can assist people? But if the only assistance is that we can extend and not charge interest, I don't know that it's really, it is what it is. It is what it is. But no, I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm sorry if you misunderstood me. That's not the direction I was going in. Um...
Lynn, can I ask them, like, a, a question about a subcategory? So...
Sure.
Well, there may be a lot of people out of work right now, um, or maybe not necessarily collecting a paycheck. Mortgage escrow accounts are paying the bulk of property taxes, but we haven't delved into that next layer. How does that break down commercial property taxpayers versus residential property taxpayers? Because that's where I see this being the biggest relief for those commercial property, those commercial property taxpayers, because they may not be getting rents right now because of that legislation that passed and they may be asking for forbearances. Um, I guess I, not being a commercial property taxpayer myself, I was hoping that, that I, it, it would appear to me that this, this, this looks like it would be aid for them even more than the homeowners. Um, and so I just wanted to better understand, how do they normally pay?
Okay, um, I'd have to look into the percentage as far as the percentage, uh, commercial versus residential, um, for, for payments. But you got to understand, businesses have mortgages too. So there could be a good percentage of businesses that are paying through escrow as well. I mean, if you have a mortgage on a business, you have, most banks will require an escrow. So I can, I can get further information on that from the treasurer collector tomorrow?
Okay.
And, and feed that information back through Melissa or through, through Dick to you?
It would be, it would be, I, I mean, it doesn't, I'm still inclined to support this, support any relief, right? Because for those folks who own commercial properties, they're not necessarily those brick and mortar shops, right? A lot of those shops are leasing from people who are now not necessarily collecting rents, which is how they normally pay their bills. And so I, I view this as a, a way to provide additional relief in whatever legal ways we can to that group as well. Because again, most homeowners, as you've already said, most homeowners that pay taxes in North Andover do already have the escrow account set up.
Correct.
Now, the, the, the final question that I'd have is, are, are you, um, Town Manager, Rodriguez, are you both comfortable with whatever it is that we settle on? I mean, I, I don't want us to put you guys, you know, you're dealing with these numbers day to day. I mean, if, if you're sitting here saying, you know, yes, our budget can handle a, a move like this, especially based on ba- past history, and we're sitting here as the elected body saying this is a form of relief that our property owners could use. It appears to be a win-win. Um, I just don't want to, I, I, like, I wouldn't want to vote for something though that, that puts us as a town or puts you as managers in a more difficult position.
Well, I think again, we're not, we're not relying on late fees in our budget, right? And we're still requiring payment before six, the end of the year. So we still have the funds available for the next fiscal year.
We're both supportive. Yeah, we're both supportive of doing this. I, I think that, um, based on the calls that we're getting, I do think that there is people who would like to see it. Um, you know, the late fees and, it's not late fees and penalties, can be substantial. Remember, it's not just your tax bill, so your excise bill, um, and other water sewer bill as well, um, that the late fees would be, um, exempted on. Um, and the other thing that it may do, which is going to sound funny, but if you know that your interest will be, um, not included, but you have to pay by June 30th, it may get some people who maybe weren't going to pay by June 30th to pay by June 30th because they know they're going to save that money. So it may actually in the end encourage some people to pay.
And Melissa, that is exactly what I think the balancing act here is because the, all works when people agree to follow through on their commitments and have that capacity. And that's a, a bit of a balancing act these days. But what works from a revenue standpoint also is the ability of people to be able to look and say, personally or my business, I can fulfill this obligation right now because I have the financial capacity. He won't, we want people to make the best decisions for their household, but we also want that to be, um, consistent with how that supports our community if possible. So if you create a path where it's easier for people to fulfill that commitment, or at least weigh that in a better way, then I, I think that makes all the sense in the world. Because again, uh, you know, one-third of the homeowners, their taxes are not escrowed. It is their choice to make that payment. Um, and only they know if they've got the capacity and we hope they do. We want them to. And the same thing with these businesses. So I think that's, um, you know, really the underwriting reason here is you give people clearer paths to make the decision. So I, I really appreciate laying out all three of these.
Right. And I just, I, this is Lynn. I just want to reiterate as well. I mean, the penalties and... interest budget that we put forth on the revenues is only $380,000. So it's not a large amount of money, and we've already collected 360 of it. So in order to implement this and waive any of the interest and penalties for the month of May and June is not going to impact the budget dramatically in any way, shape or form. So what is mostly going to come in on that is people that are going to be refinancing, and if they're potentially in tax title, they have to pay it off. And that's the only, you know, that is going to increase it above and beyond the budget. But we will, we've already pretty much met budget at 360.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that for Lynn. I think this is, it's just a, a program to, to help the citizens kind of weather the next few months. And, and again, hopefully it doesn't get to the extreme that luckily we have not seen in the past. You know, we've always been, you know, our numbers have always been pretty solid even during really tough times, but just, but the unemployment is so much greater. Again, I don't know how badly the town has been hurt with that, but it's, the unemployment numbers are, are like probably nothing that this country has ever seen, even in darker hours as this. But so, no, I, I absolutely support these offerings. I was just trying to figure out a way of maybe, is there a way to figure out who might need help in finding it out sooner? But these are the plans, so this, these are our options. So I absolutely just support it.
Okay, thank you. So we have, we have before us three more, oh, I'm sorry, Regina, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please do. We have a couple of different motions on our motion sheet that you can choose from.
Yep. I was, I was going to suggest we just cover them all at once because it seems as though everyone's supportive. So I was going to go with option two as laid out. And so I will move that the Board of Selectmen adopt the local options authorized by the following sections of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, Section 10A, 1 through 3, to extend the due date of property tax bills under General Law, Chapter 59, Sections 57 and 57(c) from May 1st to June 1st, 2020. Section 10A4, to extend the due date under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 59, for exemptions from April 1st, 2020 to June 1st, 2020. And Section 11, to waive interest and other penalty for late payment of any excise tax, water rate, or sewer change, or charge, or other charge added to a tax from any payments due on or after March 10th, 2020, but paid before June 30th, 2020.
I'll check that out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do this by roll call. Selectmen DeColigero?
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Regina Keen, aye. You skipped me.
He was still in, he was still in licensing. Okay, so we're up to Rosemary?
It would be me. Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. So that is a unanimous vote. Thank you all. Okay, moving next to, to the vote on the personnel policy, which we had a public hearing on earlier this evening. So do we have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the changes to personnel policy presented. Chris Nobley?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We kind of covered it all during the hearing. So let's move to a, a second to Coligero?
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, so that is a unanimous vote for the approval of the personnel policy changes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a vote to vote the maximum useful life for department equipment to be financed. I think this is a vote we've seen before, but I will let the Town Manager explain it to us again.
Hi, everybody. So basically, when we do a bond, we cannot bond for longer than the life cycle of the item. And so one way I usually describe this is that you don't use your credit card to buy a pack of gum, right? Because your life cycle, your packing gum is probably one day. So you'd use cash for that. But you would use your credit card to buy a new washer dryer, right? And you may say your washer dryer has a life of five years. So you'd make sure you pay that off over the five-year period so that your washer dryer doesn't break before your debt runs out, right? And so we do the same thing. And a lot of our, our debt cycle is actually set by state law, but we ask you here to authorize the length of the bond that we're taking. And so these were items that were approved in the last town meeting and that we're planning on bonding in May. And Lynn, I know you're on, so feel free to correct me on anything if I'm wrong. Nope, you got everything right.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I will, the Board of Selectmen hereby determine pursuant to GL's Chapter 44, Section 7-1, that the maximum useful life of the equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the $2,788,230 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed at the May 14th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Article 11 is to be as follows. And there's two items, replace engine truck borrowing amount $660,000, maximum useful life 10 years, and APX 6000XE portable radios borrowing amount $191,700 with a maximum useful life of eight years.
Second.
Okay, so we have, sorry, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's proceed with a roll call vote. Selectmen DeColigero?
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye. Okay, so we've got through new business. We don't have any old business on the agenda. Town Manager, Town Manager's report, we have a job posting log that was included in the package. Does anybody have any questions on the job posting log?
Mr. Chair, we're pretty much in a hiring freeze right now. We would, we would fill any positions that were public safety related, but other than that, we are really holding off on any of our hiring.
Okay, thank you. And Tom, Tom, did you have anything else you want to update us on tonight?
You know, it's, it feels like it's mostly COVID-19 all the time right now. And that's, that's basically what we've been doing. I know I did send a weekly report out this week because I felt like I hadn't sent one in a while, and there are some other things going on that needed to be portrayed. But the majority of what's happening really has been the COVID-19 response. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, it would be a nice segue if you would, would give me a moment to talk about what the North Andover Women's Club is doing with COVID-19 heroes. We are the Women's Club very old.
So move to Selectmen's updates and comments. And Smedili, do you have any comments? Here's your segue.
Thank you. I didn't see that on my paperwork, though, but that's okay. So the Women's Club, as many people have probably seen in the past, we, we flock with flamingos for, it's a fundraising event. But with this happening, we've decided that we would like to flock with a, a sign of thanks, my COVID-19 hero. So they'll get flocked with plain flamingos and a big sign with a big heart on it that is thanking people that are in the front lines or going through extraordinary means from the nurses, the doctors, the ambulance drivers, the, the fire department, the police going into domestic situations, not even knowing if the household has COVID-19. And, you know, they're seeing people with very desperate times, all the way to maybe the young kid who is bagging your groceries at the supermarket, that they're there, they're showing up to, I mean, I could just go on and on and on, teachers that have gone above and beyond during these times. So you can go on the Women's Club website, naewomensclub.com, and order for $25, we will flock them with flamingos and put a big sign in front telling them that we thank and appreciate them. With the $25, that money in, will go towards buying gift cards from our local merchants, we haven't started that process yet, that will go to, to heroes. So they'll, this is totally, all this money that is raised on this is going towards the heroes. You can buy birthday flocks or anniversary flocks. That money will also go towards the heroes. There are no gift cards associated with the birthday flock or anniversary flock, or just a funny little flamingo flock that makes people smile during these tough times. And those are actually going pretty well. People are doing that for, because they can't throw parties or whatever. So we ask that if you've got some great person that you think deserves a, a big thanks for being a hero, to consider purchasing a flock. And we will get that flock out of state for two days, and we flock even in pouring rain. And again, it's a way to say thanks for those on the front line every day. And I, I think we all will agree that there's more than we, you know, that we could even imagine. You meet someone and you hear a story and you just get almost like moved to tears. It's the kindness that's going around. So that's it, so.
And you can't see my screen, but I am sharing a picture of the flock that was put in front of Town Hall today, along with the letter that's saying you've been flocked.
Great, great. I forget who did that, but they got wet. The flockers were coming back in saying, oh, my gosh, I got soaked flocking that flock. But it's all good. It's all good.
Okay, thank you for that.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. Brought a smile to all of our faces today at Town Hall. So.
Great. That's terrific.
Okay, any other, oh, I'm sorry.
One just last thing. Some people will say to me, I don't, I don't know any nurses, or I don't know, and we do have names of people that have done some great things that are, that we would love to, to have other people flock. We're working on, we've just started that process, collecting some names of people gone above and beyond, that if you don't have a name, we can get you a name of someone that's done some pretty remarkable things. So again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other Selectmen updates?
Yeah, one thing, this is Chris Nobley here, like to mention, I don't know if folks have seen it, but there is a Adopt a North Andover High School Senior Facebook group. And it just was put together by Jennifer Rivers to encourage folks to adopt a, a senior who will be graduating technically on the 5th, helping it to kind of make it a, a big and important day for them. So I would encourage folks if they'd like to adopt the senior, putting a yard sign saying they're supporting them, or a batch of cookies, or something like that, just another way that folks could also encourage, you know, some, some kids have spent a lot of time in our school system and are going to miss one of those great events of life in, in a very different and memorable way. So nice to contribute, if you could. Adopt a North Andover Senior is the Facebook webpage.
Good, good shout out. Thank you. Anyone else? Any updates or comments?
This is the last week of the North Andover Front Steps Project.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, anyone who's read the newspaper or seen the post on Facebook, over 400 families in North Andover and over $16,000 raised for local charities, with folks being able to have their photo taken on their front step and being asked to give a good faith donation to one of the designated charities. So they're ending on May 2nd, and I just, kudos to that group of volunteers who decided, hey, we're going to take on this, you know, seemingly easy task, and 400 photos later have really made an impact. So kudos to them. And if you haven't signed up yet, visit nafrontstepsproject.com or check out their Facebook page.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. One, one thing I would have, Dia, are we still accepting food donations or any donations at the senior center? And if so, what would be the guidelines for that?
So absolutely. So they can go on the COVID-19 hotline, or they could go on the website. And there's a, a site where they can go and donate, or they can call the COVID-19 hotline. I think we're mailbox number three. And we will definitely route people to Deanna and what they can contribute and where they can go.
Great, thank you.
And you actually can also adopt a senior now as well. So if, if you have somebody that you want to specifically shop for an individual, we have that up and going now too.
And where is that on the, on the town website?
So if you go to our website, it's actually a signup genius. And I'll get you the actual, there's a shortened link that's much easier. Go find it.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else? Selectmen Keen, any comments or anything? Will we?
Nope.
Okay. Our next meeting is Monday, May 4th, which is right around the corner, so next week, a week from tonight. So we'll, we'll be all together again in just a week. And with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn. And Town Manager Rodriguez, you'll be sending that link out, I assume, to the, to the board. If you, the link we were just talking about for?
Yes, of course. Yep. I'm just looking it up.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second, Chris Nobley.
Okay, roll call vote. Selectmen DeColigero?
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Regina Keen, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Rosemary Smedili, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye, yes. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and have a great rest of your evening and a good week.